Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to welcome you to this second town hall on policing in Stark County. I'm Rabbi John Spitzer. I'm a member of Coming Together Stark County and also part of the Collaborative on Race Relations here in Stark County. A few brief announcements before we begin. First of all, our special, special thank you to the Congregation of Faith Family Church and Pastor Michael Camanetti for not only allowing us to use this space, but for donating the time and talents of their production crew and their event team to make this happen for us. We're very, very grateful for the setting and the opportunity to be in this very peaceful place. A second law, we want to express appreciation to WKSU Radio for live streaming this program, to Coming Together Stark County for utilizing their Facebook page as another platform for people to watch and to hear this program, and to the Stark County Collaborative on Race Relations. This is a group of individuals and organizations that came together for the sole purpose of trying to deepen and lengthen the conversation on race and race relations in our community. It's been a wonderful opportunity to work with these individuals who have good comments, good support, and who bring their strengths to this ongoing conversation about race. A few little bits of housekeeping. For those people who are here in the auditorium, you received an agenda for this evening, and it calls for the presence of Chief Mark Brink, the Chief of the Jackson Township Police. Unfortunately, Chief Brink has other duties this evening, but it does offer us the opportunity to give a much-needed and desired sports reference in that we have this evening a pinch hitter. It's supposed to be funny. We are very, very grateful to Todd Hawke, who is a township trustee, who will be filling that time and bringing us information about Jackson Township. Questions have been submitted and will be submitted for the group this evening. Some people have submitted questions to the email site starkcountycorr@gmail.com, and we have questions that have already been submitted. Some people may choose to submit questions during the program. Again, to that Gmail site, starkcountycorr@gmail.com. And then there are people here in the audience, a small group because of social distancing and so on, who may also choose to ask questions. In the auditorium, there are mics on both aisles. In order to ask a question this evening, you will need to queue up at the microphones, socially distanced, and use the microphone to ask your question. We do that because that's the way that people who are watching the streaming will be able to hear what you have to say. Because we've had some questions that have already been submitted, we are going to alternate between pre-submitted questions and questions from people in the auditorium. And one of the things that we have talked about and are going to strive to do is that for questions that have been submitted that don't get asked this evening because of time, our speakers have made a commitment that they would respond to those questions in written form. So if you have a question and submit it, make sure that you submit it with your name and then email address on it so that we can get back to you. That having been said, we very much appreciate your presence, your interest, and for being a part of this ongoing conversation on race and racism, especially this evening about policing in our county. It's my pleasure to call forward Mr. Ron Ponder, who will be the emcee for the evening.
Thank you, Rabbi. And I'll mention to all of you, those on the podium that's going to be speaking, I've got some handy wipes down here, and after each speaker, when you come up, if you want to, and I suggest that you do, you take a handy wipe and clean the microphone. And we're going to be doing the same thing on either side of the auditorium where the other microphones are. When you get up to speak, I think they're already going to be wiped for you, but you keep notice if you're going...yeah, there's Joe over there who will take care of that. And I think, oh, Frank will do it over there. I want to reiterate what the Rabbi said and welcome you all here. Appreciate you coming. I think this is very important. Tuesday night, we had a great reception, again because of social distancing. We limited the in-house audience, but there were so many people who watched it streaming someplace, and they streamed in three or four different places, including WKSU and Spectrum and Coming Together Stark County and other places. So we appreciate the interest, and we're going to try to make sure that it's worth your while as we have tonight's event as well. And it's been asked three or four times, are we going to continue to do this? I think that the conversation almost demands it. I think there's going to always be questions, and folks are always going to want answers to those questions. So in some form, this will continue. I'm not sure how, but I do know it will continue. Now, Tuesday night, we had the City of Canton. We had the mayor, the police chief, and different police officers, and they dispensed a lot of information. And I've said before, not to editorialize, but I think the City of Canton, I've been, I guess, poking them with a stick for the last 20, 25 years, and they've done their best to do their best. And I'm really pleased with the progress that they've made. They will tell you themselves that they know they can do better, and they're going to continue to try to do better. And that's a good thing. But we have to make sure that we start from a position of reality, and we have to know what they're doing and what they're not doing. And the same thing with this evening. We branched out into the county. We have the Sheriff's Department. We have other police jurisdictions here in Stark County, and we have members of the Ohio State Highway Patrol. So without any further ado, we're going to get started, and we're going to have...who's first up is John Ferrero, who is a Stark County prosecutor. And as the prosecutor, he is a chief law enforcement official of the entire county. So we're going to have John Ferrero come up, and then we'll go through our agenda after that. John?
Good evening, everyone. Just want to make just a thank you for allowing us to come speak here tonight. Very timely subject. I think everybody needs to continue, continue the conversation. Many times I get asked, you know, what does a county prosecutor do? And I think it's important I give you a little overview of what our duties are and how we interrelate with our police agencies here in Stark County. First of all, Ohio's prosecuting attorneys are primarily ministers of justice, and they are voice for victims. As ministers of justice, prosecuting attorneys play an integral role in our public safety. They prosecute adults accused of felonies and juveniles accused of delinquent acts. Prosecuting attorneys are the courtroom advocates for victims of crime and their families. All prosecuting attorneys work closely with law enforcement to pursue justice for those guilty of a crime and to stand for the victims of crime. In addition, prosecuting attorneys and their staff are responsible for the legal needs of all county township officials and serve as counsel for those offices. I don't represent all the police agencies here today, except the Sheriff's Department, which in case things go for personnel or anything to do with his office, we are his County prosecuting attorneys begin criminal casework once they've determined the law enforcement officers had collected enough evidence to suggest a felony, offense has been committed. If accused, if arrested, the accused appears before municipal court judge, who will hold a preliminary hearing to determine whether there is probable cause that the individual committed that alleged offense. If probable cause exists, the case is bound over to Court of Common Pleas. A case cannot proceed to the trial in the Court of Common Pleas unless it goes through a grand jury. The prosecuting attorney presents the case to the grand jury on behalf of the state of Ohio. In this proceeding, only the prosecuting attorney, grand jury members, and witnesses are authorized to attend. When a grand jury finds probable cause that a person committed the alleged offense, it votes to indict that person. Now called the defendant, and that case is set for trial in the Court of Common Pleas. At this point, the prosecuting attorney presents the case against the defendant. Cases can be resolved in one of several ways. A person can agree to a plea agreement between the prosecutor's office and the defendant's attorney before the case goes to trial. The jury, our jury verdict can end up...if the case goes to trial, a jury verdict will determine the guilt or innocence of the defendant. Or the judge can, they can have a trial to the judge, and then the judge would make a, a decision on that. Throughout the process, prosecuting attorneys balance their duties as ministers of justice and advocates for the victims of crime with their ethical duty to pursue evidence that either may exonerate a person accused of a crime or mitigate punishment. This is very important. We, we have a duty as prosecutors. If we find evidence that, that says this person did not commit the crime, we are duty-bound to express that to the court and to get the case dismissed at that time. Prosecuting attorneys make sure victims are aware of court dates, status of pending court cases, and availability of appropriate community resources and services. Prosecuting attorneys also invite the input of crime victims and take their feelings and wishes into account on the prosecution and resolution of a case against a defendant. Also, part of our job as prosecuting attorneys is to recognize the importance of education of general public such as tonight, the media, local office holders, and other constituencies on the roles and responsibilities of their office. In addition, there are proactive supporters of community safety initiatives, especially for seniors, children, and families. We have many of those here in Stark County. The SERF program, the Community Initiative to Reduce Violence, we have the Children's Network for children who are abused sexually and physically. We have the Crime Stoppers, and we also have the Elder Abuse Task Force. So there's many, many of those that we, we are involved in locally. As I stated earlier, we, the prosecuting attorneys are under ethical guidelines that if we do not certain things, we're in jeopardy of losing our law license. So we have to take this very seriously. And in a criminal case, one of those requirements is we have to refrain from prosecuting a charge that the prosecutor knows is not supported by probable cause. We have to be very careful to make sure there's probable cause of the case and go to trial. And also, we have to make timely disclosures to defense of all evidence of information known to the prosecutor that tends to negate the guilt of the accused or mitigates the offense. So we have to, if the evidence comes through investigation or through our own investigation in our office and we find out something, we have to tell the attorney for the defendant about this, and more than likely, the case will be dismissed. Prior to, prior to I becoming county prosecutor, I also served as Mass Law Director, and with that position, I was also the chief prosecutor of the Mass Municipal Court. So I have had many, many years, and I'm not going to tell you how many, of working with numerous police agencies in Stark County. Through the years, it's been an honor to work with these individuals who are dedicated and professional officers. Are they all perfect? Of course not. But which profession is? Lawyers, doctors, accountants, everyone, every profession has their problems, and all of us are not perfect. However, all police are on center stage right now because of the criminal and reckless acts of a few around this country. I tend to look at the good that the women and men of our police agencies do. While you and I and our families are safely at home sleeping at night, many of the men and women who, who work for our police agencies are out patrolling our streets, keeping us safe. And believe me, I have seen a lot of videos of arrests that are made late at night when a person is drunk or high or whatever, and an officer has to put up with that. So I knew they, they're dedicated, they, they, it's not the best of circumstances, but we have to appreciate what they do in protecting us. However, are changes needed? Yes. I think that's why we're here tonight. That's why they had the conference on Tuesday, is changes are good, and we're always going to have to look at that. Is now the time for that? Most definitely. If we don't do it now, I don't know when we are. And as Ron said earlier, we have to continue this discussion going. And I see it, the lawmakers on the federal level, on the state level, are enacting laws that will affect how police do their work. We're seeing that on a daily basis. Police agencies will be amended, will have to amend their policy manuals and make sure training is a priority. And also, when officers are hired, they have to make sure they recruit good officers and get the best candidates that they possibly can. I think that's going to be very important in the future of policing. My office will work hard to make sure that changes happen and are followed through. We will work with the Police Chiefs Association, the Sheriff's Office, to offer any assistance that our office can give. It's their job as police officers to protect us, to do, to do what they need to do, and it's up, again, I told you what our duties are, but also, we can also help them and assist them. My office does, when we see something out of the ordinary, a lot of times, the case would come to the grand jury, and maybe it will not be, it would not be indicted, it would be no-billed, which means it would be no charges filed. Maybe we saw something that was not done properly, and we will tell the police officer, hey, you need to do this, or I'll call the chief, maybe you need to give him or her some more training to make sure they do it correctly. So we need to do that assistance, and I think, I think with the good police departments and the good police chiefs and sheriff that we have, that's not going to be a problem. I'm going to continue the SERF program. We're going to continue to listen to complaints from our citizens. Sit down with them. My office is always open to them for complaints, and we will answer their complaints in a timely fashion. Someone once said, "Everyone thinks of changing the world, but no one thinks of changing himself." And policing as we know it needs to make changes, and it will. I see it coming. The policing is not the only area that I think we need to change. We need to, we need to find ways to change. That little boy who witnesses his mother be physically abused time after time and ends up being abused himself, an abuser himself. Are the children who are always around parents who do drugs and are drinking alcohol, and they follow in their footsteps? Are the child who sees gangs make easy money and gain respect in a neighborhood, and he then, he then joins the, joins the gangs? If we can change this cycle, policing will be a lot easier. Thank you.
You're going to meet different people from different jurisdictions this evening, and I really encourage you to take a pen and paper out and take notes, because there's going to be some question and answer sessions afterwards, and I'm sure something, someone's going to say something that's going to prompt you to come up with a question, and I don't want you to forget what that is. That's what we're here for, to hopefully inform, educate, and answer any questions. The next speaker, most of you probably know, and one of the things I've said over and over again about almost all the jurisdictions in Stark County. Now, I'm fortunate because I know most chiefs, I know quite a few of their officers. You don't, you may not know that. This gives you an opportunity to begin to know them, and I encourage you to always try to learn and meet as many as you can. This next person that I met years ago has never let me down. First of all, he's like the rest of them. He's a good person with a lot of character. Now, George ain't perfect, but he's trying to be. He's close, close to it. But that's up to you to decide, after you've heard him tonight and after you hopefully have a chance to meet him in the future. So I bring to you now the sheriff of Stark County, Mr. George Meyer.
Thank you, Ron. Good evening, everyone. I think I'm socially far enough away that I'm going to take my mask off, if that's okay. And I'm trying to change the tone a little bit and talk about where we are and where we're going. First of all, thank you, thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight, to speak to you, and to be able to have this forum. It certainly is an honor to be here. My name is George Meyer. I'm your Stark County sheriff. I've been sheriff since about 2013, so a little over seven years. So this evening, I'd like to talk a little bit about the Sheriff's Office, and specifically, I could spend hours talking to you about recruitment and the way we recruit and hire officers. And I could talk to you about our minority recruitment and diverse recruitment efforts and put forth to, to ensure that the makeup of the Sheriff's Office in Stark County represents our community. I could talk to you a little bit about backgrounds and how we conduct backgrounds and how our backgrounds are very extensive. And while we talk about people, when they apply for a job and they give you a reference, that's not always the best reference. So we go beyond that. And what we do is we take a look at their social media, because we want to look at people when they don't know that other people are looking at them. We want to see what they're like in their everyday life, and we want to know if they have the right temperament, the right heart, the right compassion to be a police officer, to be a sheriff's deputy. I could talk to you a little bit about how all our employees have to undergo a stringent psychological exam process and how they all have to have polygraph examinations before we hire them. I could talk to you a little bit about the minority makeup that's at the Sheriff's Office, which is a little over 7%, which is pretty close to what our population is here in Stark County. And while that might be good, we strive each and every day to be better and to do a better job at that. I could talk to you a little bit about our basic training and what's required. And if you were here on Tuesday, you heard a little bit about some basic training. I could talk to you about our advanced training and how all our officers, all our deputies and corrections officers must complete crisis intervention training, excuse me. And we hear a lot about crisis intervention training, and the reason we hear about crisis intervention training is because it's part of our everyday lives. I would guess that not many in this room would be singled out to say that they don't deal in some way or another with somebody in the past that's been in crisis, or somebody in the past that suffers from addiction or addiction recovery. And that's what we deal with every day, and so it's important that we have that advanced training, and all our deputies are trained with crisis intervention training. I could talk to you about our body cameras and how we have a five-year agreement with Motorola to have our body cameras renewed and updated each and every year so that we have the latest and greatest technology, not just for our officers, but for the community we serve, the people that we are entrusted to serve, the people that we have to build and develop legitimacy with to serve properly. I could talk to you about how we review use-of-force cases and how those use-of-force cases are sent to OIBRIS, Ohio Crime Statistics, and how internally we review use-of-force cases, and when they're reviewed by supervisors, if there's something that's out of line or not within policy, how we address those issues. And I could talk to you about our community relations and how we strive to get out in our community before there's a problem, before there's a crisis in our community. I could talk to you about our Coffee with a Cop program, where we partner with all the law enforcement agencies throughout the county to come and sit down at a restaurant or cafe in your community, in your neighborhood, and invite you in with no agenda and just sit down and talk and get to know us, understand what we're about, and let us, help us understand what's going on in the community that we're entrusted to serve, and how that program has helped us build bridges throughout the county. Well, honestly, I don't have time tonight. We are on a pretty tight timeframe, time schedule, and I don't have time tonight to talk about all those things in deep detail. But I do want to talk to you about some other issues that I think that are very important to me and to law enforcement all across the country. And I want to talk about President Obama's task force on 21st century policing. Not too many people hear about that. We're, we're into a new administration from President Obama, but there was a task force put together in 2015 where a task force convened the U.S. Department of Justice in Washington, D.C., to discuss policing in general and community policing. While a number of underlying issues were identified during this task force, and a number of highly skilled folks participated in that task force, there were a number of those recommendations that also followed with action items. And those, there were six main topic areas that were identified from this task force. The first one, which I, I think is very important, I'll talk a little bit about tonight, is building trust in legitimacy with the community that you serve. If our community, the people that we serve, do not trust us and do not see us as legitimate, we can never be successful in reducing crime and making our neighborhoods safe. We can never be successful. So to me, of the six pillars in the President's 21st Century Policing Initiative, the number one pillar, without that, the rest cannot follow. So I want to talk a little bit about that. I'll tell you what the other pillars are. Policy and oversight. One of the things we heard here Tuesday, and I'm sure we'll hear more tonight, is about policies. And I've talked to some folks before the meeting tonight and how there's a thought process about how we renovate our policies or update our policies to meet the needs of our community, and certainly oversight for those policies. The other pillar is technology and social media. No disrespect to any of the media in the room, but one of the things that was identified was we need to utilize the media that most of our community is utilizing, and that's a social media platform. And so, you know, police agencies today, a lot of them will have a social media platform, and they will put out tweets, and they will put out information on Facebook and other social media platforms. But it's important that we do that, because without doing that, we're not really reaching out to those that we serve. We're not allowing them the opportunity to know what we do. While we may put a nice article that, that might hit the Cleveland News, or we might have a nice article in the newspaper that talks about something that we did, a lot of people won't see that, unfortunately. And so we need to, we need to embrace technology and social media, which law enforcement has been a little slow at doing. Community policing and crime reduction. There are countless reports and statistics out there that have supported the community policing initiative. And I know that we, our, my agency as well as others in the county are part of the Ohio Collaborative, and one of the things that they have addressed in the past is community policing. And Pastor Moss serves on the board of the Collaborative. Thank you for that. We appreciate that. So we can do, we can do a better job through community policing. Another pillar is officer training and education. I don't know, honestly, I've been doing this, as the prosecutor said, he's been doing this for a lot of years, but I don't, I really don't know. I'm approaching 40 years in the profession, and I can tell you, I don't know of any officer that has ever said to me, "I don't want any more training." It may have happened, but I don't really know that. And so we have an obligation as leaders to make sure that we get the proper training. Officer safety and wellness, obviously, that's very important. As I said, the first pillar is very crucial to me and very important, to build trust with the community, nurturing the legitimacy of both, the, both sides with the police and the citizens we serve. with the police and the citizens we serve. The community confers legitimacy when they believe actions are procedurally just. And isn't that what we're talking about today? Procedurally just. How can I serve you if you don't think I'm doing it procedurally correct and just? And so that's a challenge for me and other people like me that wear the uniform to make sure that we build that bridge. The pillar is in place certainly to build relationships. A law enforcement culture should embrace the guardian versus rather than warrior mentorship. Because we are guardians. We are guardians of the community. We should not be the warriors of the community. Rather than, the mindset is to build trust and legitimacy, both within the agencies and with the public. The theme that resonates with me the most is recommendation of the police culture. And so I just told you a couple of minutes ago that, while I've been doing this for nearly 40 years, I can tell you that 40 years ago, this job was different than what it is today. 10 years ago, this job is different than what it is today. Five years ago, this job is different than what it is today. We have to continue to change. We recognize that. We hear you loud and clear. We have to continue to change. We've changed to meet the needs of our community. And I'll close with a quote from Plato. "In a republic that honors core democracy, the greatest amount of power is given to those called guardians. Only those with the most impeccable character are chosen to bear the responsibility of protecting the democracy." Thank you again for allowing me to be here this evening.
Me and these wipes are not getting along very well. Thank you, Sheriff Meyer. Not too, well, about a year ago, the Pro Football Hall of Fame hosted the HBCU Classic. That's when some historically black colleges participated in a game, one of their college games in the new stadium. And we found out today that formally, because of the virus, it's not going to be this year. They're going to have to wait until next year. But last year, we had a lot of people, a lot of supporters from all over the country, actually. And I had a chance to meet some folks from the Highway Patrol. In fact, it was Captain Marvin Hill and some other folks. Marvin is here with us along with Major Chuck Jones. And Major Jones is over the academy in Columbus. And I've been told by almost every police officer that they think that's the best academy, not just in the state, but in the country. They run the heck out of that academy. But we won't have the HBCU game again this year. It will be here again next year. But we do have Captain Marvin Hill and we also have Major Chuck Jones. They're here representing the State Patrol and I bring both of them to the podium right now.
I'm going to take the liberty to unmask as well so that you can all hear me. That's okay. As Mr. Ponder said, I'm Major Chuck Jones. I'm the commander of the Office of Training, Recruitment and Diversity for the Ohio State Highway Patrol. And tonight I have with me Captain Marvin Hill, to my left, who is the Highway Patrol Diversity Officer. Before I get started here, I would just like to thank Mr. Ponder and the Stark County Collaborative on race relations on behalf of Colonel Richard Fambro, our superintendent, for inviting us here today to be a part of this very important town hall. I'd like to take an opportunity first to just tell you a little bit about the Highway Patrol and what our duties and responsibilities are to give you just a snapshot of what we do every day. And then I'm going to dive into our diversity initiative that Captain Hill oversees. The Ohio State Highway Patrol is comprised of 59 patrol posts that serve all of Ohio's 88 counties. Troopers make personal contact with over 1.4 million motorists annually and impact millions more. In addition to traffic enforcement, the Patrol is responsible for the security of state government officials, visiting dignitaries, security at state facilities and criminal investigations. Additionally, the Patrol oversees the Ohio Investigative Unit, which enforces the state's liquor, tobacco and food stamp laws. The Patrol also provides assistance to local law enforcement when requested. Our mission in the Highway Patrol is to protect life and property, promote traffic safety and provide professional public service with respect. Although our personnel strength varies, the Patrol maintains a uniformed complement of approximately 1,600 officers. In addition, there are about 1,000 support personnel, which include limited inspectors, motor vehicle inspectors, motor carrier enforcement inspectors, dispatchers, electronic technicians and civilian specialists that complete the Patrol's personnel strength. The work our employees do each day is making our roadways and communities safer. Troopers across the state engage with local schools to educate students about making good decisions and living a drug-free lifestyle. They also participate in community-oriented programs and build the lines of trust and the lines of communication with the citizens that we serve. The Ohio State Highway Patrol was founded on principles to serve the public. Our mission of service is to make our state safer, a safer place to live. And we work by doing that, by reducing traffic fatalities and removing dangerous criminals from our roadways. The Patrol prides itself on a foundation of faithful service with an unwavering commitment to deliver public safety with respect. Now I'd like to just talk a little bit about our Diversity Office and then I'm going to turn it over to Captain Hill to talk a little bit about some of the initiatives that his office is currently doing for the division. In December of 2018, the Highway Patrol established a Division Diversity Officer. The Diversity Office's responsibilities include recruiting and retaining the next generation of troopers and ensuring we have a diverse workforce, reviewing and revising existing policies to enhance patrol professional operations, develop and expand training opportunities for all of our personnel, continue our investment in leadership development. And the Diversity Officer also serves as the Patrol's representative for minority and protected class employees. Achieving diversity in law enforcement agencies can increase trust between those agencies and the communities we serve. This basic trust can be essential in diffusing tension, investigating and solving crimes and creating a system where citizens believe they can rely on the police and receive fair treatment. A commitment to diversity in hiring and promotion opens crucial public sector jobs to all Americans and Ohioans to help ensure equal employment opportunities in law enforcement or public safety careers. In February of 2019, the Diversity Office established a Core Planning Committee, which is comprised of sworn and civilian representatives throughout the agency. The Diversity Core Planning Committee meets regularly to discuss diversity within our agency. And the group came up with four different goals. The first goal is to enhance a sense of community, both internally and externally within the agency. They also want to obtain a 45% protected class in our training academy classes, just like Sheriff Meyer talked about. You know, we also have the desire to make sure that the Highway Patrol, the makeup of the Highway Patrol reflects the demographics of the state. And Captain Hill and our recruitment staff do all they can on a daily basis to recruit the finest that we can to bring on to the Highway Patrol. We also want to increase a diversified pool of eligible employees for supervisor positions. So we're looking within our ranks and what the makeup is demographically of our rank structure within the Highway Patrol in an attempt to also improve that. And then we also want to improve the retention of our diverse workforce within a specified amount of time. So these are just some goals that the Diversity Office, specifically the Diversity Core Planning Committee, has been working on in the Highway Patrol. The Highway Patrol has core values. And prior to May 2019, we had nine core values that we've had for a long, long time. When Colonel Fambro was sworn in as the 19th Superintendent of the Highway Patrol, our first African-American superintendent, Colonel felt it was important to add a 10th core value. The 10th core value that we added in May of 2019 is diversity. Right? Diversity is very, very important, as we talked about here tonight. And Colonel believes that as well as all of us in the Highway Patrol. So right now, I'm going to step away and I'm going to turn it over to Captain Hill and I'm going to let him talk about some of the initiatives, specifically our value engagement approach that we use within the Highway Patrol. Cap?
I'm going to be brief. I'm a teacher by trade, so I'm going to give you some information. But first, when I teach diversity and I always talk about diversity, it's all about relationship. So I'm going to just tell you a little bit about me real briefly so you know when we can establish a relationship. I come from a law enforcement family. My father was a police officer for 30 years. I have an older brother that retired from the Highway Patrol. I have a younger son that's in this county that works as a trooper. And I have a younger son that's also a deputy. So there is good police officers out there and I don't want to get that wrong. But there's some things that we need to do to correct and that's what we're going to do. So Major Jones talked about the value engagement approach. We trained our entire agency, officers as well as civilian personnel on this approach. And basically, the value engagement approach is this. It says that every person, every person has an equal intrinsic value, which means because you were born and you're here on this earth, you have value. And that officers need to value the citizens they protect as well as we need to value each other. And then when we do things, we do it right. We treat people properly and fairly. And that's what it's all about. Sheriff Meyer talked about police legitimacy and procedural justice. And I'm going to delve down just real quick and briefly. All the police officers have had this training because it was mandated by Ohio. So to establish police legitimacy, you need procedural justice. And there's four things in that. The people need to have a voice. We need to be neutral. We need to be transparent and we need to be impartial in our actions and interacting with the citizens. And the last thing I'll say is this. There's a little quote that I use a lot and I really truly believe this. And basically it says, every interaction, every interaction with the citizens, we need to treat it as an opportunity, as an opportunity to make a difference in the lives of the people that we're sworn to protect. So thank you.
All right, I'll wrap it up with just a statement. The Highway Patrol is committed to developing an organizational culture that celebrates diversity and individual talents of our current and future employees. A diverse organization creates opportunities for innovation, improved problem solving and a greater sense of trust and legitimacy with the public. Thank you.
I hope you didn't miss the point that Major Jones made about the person in charge of the State Patrol is an African-American. And I haven't had a chance to meet him yet, but I hope to do that in the future. Our next speaker is from North Canton. He's currently the mayor. But I met Steve Wilder years ago when he was the chief. I don't think I remembered him when he was a patrol officer, but he's a good guy. And I wanted him to come because I wanted him to explain from his perspective of being a patrol officer, for being the chief and now being the mayor of North Canton. And I'm anxious to hear what he has to say about that. So next I bring to you the mayor of North Canton, Mr. Steve Wilder.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to just say one thing about Mr. Ron Ponder. Ron, you said you know most of the chiefs here, but I want you to make sure that that's done in a positive way, not a negative way. And I want to thank the, for all of you attending and watching. It truly is a privilege to be here on this stage with these special people dedicated to public service in one way or another. I too would like to thank the coming-together Stark County, the city of Canton, the NAACP, the Greater Stark County Urban League, Faith Family Church, John Spitzer, Rabbi Emeritus, Temple Israel, and Ron Ponder for being an emcee. I want to thank you for your willingness to invite us to attend this town hall meeting regarding thoughts, concerns and future for the health, safety and well-being of our families and our communities. Just as we were restarting to regain a sense of normalcy, productivity, togetherness, livelihood, tragedy and trauma has engulfed our society, communities, country, families and our consciousness. The death of George Floyd, while in police custody and witnessed throughout our country and world as absolutely horrific and inhumane. While we do not want to rush to judgment, but we do want to speak against acts of injustice. As we witness a response to this killing around the country, we are once again faced with the past and present racisms, hate, mistrust and selflessness. From this single act, anger and sorrow sucks the life out of communities everywhere. The violence surrounding injustice holds victims, families and neighborhoods hostage. It rips communities apart and prevents them from coming together. Folks, I cannot begin to comprehend the difficult conversations fathers and mothers are having with each other and their children, especially in minorities and others regardless of color or creed. How are they trying to process the hurt and injustice that has transpired and the memories that have stirred because of disheartening police-citizen contacts? It is unbelievable that the other officers did not act to answer his pleas for help. For the law enforcement officers and organizations of our country who lament with dashed hopes that they must start again and rebuild what meager trust they have hoped to have achieved all these years. There are more upright, honest and trusting law enforcement officers who are committed to doing good, who have watched the unbearable video, who are simply angered and sickened by what they too have seen. Nothing is more important than the health, safety and welfare of our community. Navigating COVID-19 pandemic disease, reopening and restarting our communities and the magnitude of public emotions and behavior regarding basic treatment of one another with fairness and decency. I did not exactly expect I would be in I did not exactly expect I would be encountering the current emotional issues facing our community, state, and country. However, I remain focused on transforming our city to a city of choice. And that North Canton is committed to making a safe place for all races. Two major priorities are that North Canton is a community of culture and diversity, a caring and thriving and energized place for the arts, culture, and heritage, where diversity and inclusivity are embraced and encouraged. North Canton is a safe, supportive city where people are active, healthy, and have a high quality of life. The North Canton Police Department is committed to providing law enforcement services to the community with due regard for the racial, cultural, or other differences of those served. It is the policy of the department to provide law enforcement, service, and to enforce the law equally, fairly, objectively, and without discrimination toward any individual or group. Allow me to share just a little bit of background about myself. Serving as North Canton's Chief of Police for six years, in 2015, as it was mentioned, I committed our police department to join the Ohio Collaborative Community Police Advisory Board of Standards for all law enforcement agencies in the state of Ohio. Since that time, the department has adopted, trained, and implemented Ohio's new and current standards regarding, allow me to share the following. Investigations of employee misconduct or standards of conduct. Biased-based policing prohibited or biased-free policing. Telecommunicator training or emergency dispatching system. Body worn cameras or portable audio or video recorders. Use of force or use of deadly force. Agency employee recruitment and hiring, community engagement and reviewing recruitment and selection. Vehicle pursuit standards. Improving community relations. Focusing on better training, and also learning more about de-escalation practices. Therefore, the police department had completed that certification process and had been duly certified and meeting, and meeting and training for those standards as required by the state of Ohio. And this year, hopefully will be recertified again for another three or four years. I believe the employees of North Canton Police Department and other city services remain committed to performing their duties and responsibilities in a fair and just manner. Understandably, there is always room for improvement. Throughout my 36 years of law enforcement and public service with the North Canton Police Department, I have experienced and witnessed the steady commitment of its employees to serve the public fairly, respectfully, impartially, and with utmost decency. Certainly, this is no ordinary time, folks, for us. I sincerely appreciate your patience and understanding as we navigate COVID-19 disease, reopening and restarting our communities, and the magnitude again of our public emotions and behavior regarding just basic treatment of one another with fairness and decency and social, emotional, and physical injustices. I truly understand the frustrations we all are sharing and keeping our cities and communities a safe place for all races and groups. It tells us, me, tells me of your hopefulness, in which I share the same ambition for the betterment of our community and humankind. Something else we have in common is we value all human life. Because life is sacred regardless of color or creed. My parents led by example. They taught our family to be respectful of others whose race, religion, and customs may differ from ours. All our lives we will be associating with people of other beliefs, customs, and races. It is our duty to respect those, these people for their beliefs and customs. And to live our own, respect other people no matter who they are. You are brave when you speak the truth, and when you make a mistake, apologize for it. And you know, and you show true courage when you defend the rights of others. Folks, I think the statement has been made. What we face now is how are we going to make a difference? That message is loud and clear. I think it's being received out there. But today, in this audience or who's listening and on this stage, how do we go about making it different peacefully and orderly and understandably that we respect each other in one way or another? Thank you for allowing me to share my thoughts and concerns with you. Because working together, we can enact a positive change peacefully for the betterment of our city and Stark County, and for your families and communities wherever you live. Better days are ahead, folks. May you and your family stay safe and keep well. Thank you for the privilege of me sharing this time with you.
Now, Jackson's Police Chief Mark Brink couldn't be here this evening, but he sent a worthy replacement. Todd Hawke is one of the trustees in Jackson Township. But before I ask Todd to join us up here, I want to mention two other people in the, uh, audience, well, who are here. Willis Gordon is from the NAACP. Let's give Willis a hand, please. And Andy Toroski, is Andy still here? There he is over there. Andy is a police chief of Lewisville and a good friend. Andy reached out to me years ago. He wanted to meet me and talk to me about some things and, and, uh, I spent some good times with Andy, learning about him and, and Lewisville. In fact, I used to do some diversity training with Lewisville School System over there. Uh, I like Lewisville. And all of the negative things you might have heard about Lewisville, they ain't right. They're not true. And Andy is a good example of what Lewisville stands for. But as I said before, Chief Mark Brink from Jackson Township couldn't be here this evening, but he did send Todd Hawke. So let's have Todd Hawke, who is one of the trustees of Jackson Township, come forward and earn his pay.
So good evening. Um, as Mr. Ponder said, I'm Todd Hawke. I am the chairman of the Board of Trustees of Jackson Township. Uh, Chief Brink does send his apologies for not being able to be here. Uh, he had another event that he needed to attend to this evening. So you did get, as Rabbi Spitzer said, a pinch hitter. One of the problems with a pinch hitter is you don't get a lot of warm-up time. So I'll do the best I can to get through this and give you some information as to what we do in Jackson and how the township, how the Township Police Department functions. Uh, one of the big questions first and foremost we'd like to tell you is you are in Jackson Township right now. So welcome to Jackson Township. It's a great facility to be here. We appreciate everything Faith Family Church has done to have us here. The question and the, and the kind of thought that was posed to us, or to me at least, about what I should talk about this evening is the, how we handle and what goes on with a large influx of folks into Jackson Township on a daily basis. If you're not familiar with Jackson Township, we are one of the largest retail hospitality hubs in Stark County. We are full of retail shops, the mall, hotels, bars, restaurants. Everything that goes into that comes into the play. There are numbers, pre-COVID at least, that, you know, on a daily basis, we could be upwards of about 100,000 folks in Jackson Township during the day. Our resident, resident population is about 41,000. So when you're, when you're set up for a policing department for 41,000 and you get 100,000 during the day, how do you function through that? Uh, so we spend a lot of time talking to our officers about how they deal with that. There are a lot of guests that come in from other areas. Obviously with the Pro Football Hall of Fame just down the road, and we have, us having a lot of hotels, we have a lot of visitors that stay in Jackson Township. When that happens and that, that goes on, you look at a lot of issues that revolve around traffic influxes, the congestion that can go on, accidents that can happen. How do you deal with that? How do you get through those processes? How do you treat people fairly? How do you get to that end result on someone's bad day? I mean, that we spend a lot of time, as a trustee, we're very connected to our departments. Trustees in the township form of government, there are three trustees, one fiscal officer. That is the elected officials in a township. So we spend a lot of time, we actually interview the folks. We do the police interviews. We talk to officers before they're hired. And a lot of the things we ask them about, don't center around the policing items that have been discussed here on the stage before me. That's the chief's job. That's the major's job. They're working with them to do those types of things. We're asking them some of the other questions. How are you going to deal with the residents? How are you going to work through those situations? Understand that a lot of our residents and a vast majority of our guests that come to the township never get to see me. They don't see the township trustee that's elected. They see you as that officer. You are who they see as Jackson Township. So we really have a high standard of what we expect when they're out there talking to the public, when they're working with them in those situations. Another big thing that comes up obviously with that large number of people and dealing with the retail space is our theft issues. How do you deal with that? You're, again, getting someone on a worse situation. They've had something that was stolen from them. They felt violated. There's some issue there. How do you deal with those situations? How do you make them feel okay to get through that? I'm always proud to say that I get a lot more notifications from people saying how, what a wonderful interaction they had with our police officers. They helped them get through it. They felt good. They took them the extra step, got them back to their home or to their car or whatever that needed to be. They do a really good job with that, and I really do think that it's something that we have an opportunity to show that and make that difference in people's lives and to do that side. Uh, from a retail perspective too, one of the other ones that comes in, we hear a lot about, I looked at some of the statistics as far as what cases look like in the Detective Bureau today. Most of the increases that we've seen, the larger pieces are around thefts. But the other one is the theft that a lot of us don't see, identity theft and those types of things and fraud cases. We get a lot of those as you can imagine, when you have a lot of swipes of cards and a lot of things going on. Slowed down a little bit because people weren't out on retail shopping. They were doing it online, but those online pieces come in as well. Uh, so we're working to make sure that we're able to handle those situations as we go through. Our officers a lot of times are hired for extra duty jobs. They get hired to come into bars. They get hired to come into restaurants, to work special events when there's a product launch at a retail shop. They are, they're, they have to be up on their game, know how to deal with those situations from a crowd's perspective. Issues that happens in, that happen in bars, always issues when you add alcohol to the mix and how those types of things play out. We spend a lot of time working through that. And, and the other issue that comes in there is looking at crashes. And we, we have had an uptick of late with the bars and things back open of OVI issues and crashes that have happened. So that's something they're really watching for and making sure that those folks are safe. You're safe to get from your house, your, your house to that location and back. Obviously, I actually, I have two, I have 17-year-old twins. They drive. I'm worried about them getting home and getting back to where they belong. So I really appreciate that piece that's there. Um, one other issue for Jackson Township is we have a lot of exits right off of 77. So it's a very easy access to a highway that runs all the way through up to Cleveland. You know, there's a lot of space to go through down into West Virginia. It keeps on moving all throughout the country. So that access adds a lot of opportunity for things like illegal drugs, prostitution issues and sex crimes. Then in fugitives coming in and out. So we spend a lot of time working through that process as well. And how do you handle it? How do you get through that? And how do you do it in a safe manner around the other folks that that situation is happening around? Uh, I'm very proud of the way we've worked on that. There were some, a couple of operations that happened recently and we did a really good job in conjunctions with a lot of the agencies sitting up here to take some people out of the, out of the, out of the space, doing things they shouldn't be doing. So those, those were definitely big pieces for us. Um, the other thing I will give you, and I'll, I'll end this from that standpoint for me, is with that township trustee issue, we spend a lot of time directly with not just our police chief, but with our fire chief, with our high, Public Works Director. We spend time, once a month, there's a meeting with all our department heads, and we talk about issues they're all having and how can they overlap to each other. So when Sheriff Meyer talks about doing things and getting better and being the best and doing the best you can, that's something we're doing every day in every department. And those best practices that come from the fire department can sometimes translate to the police and from the police to the fire department. So we're obviously working through those as well. One of the big things I will leave you with is from a police department perspective, we are very big on that, again, relationship and presence in the community. Our township is divided into zones. The cars are go, go to each zone. It's the same officers in those zones. They get to know the people. They are out there doing vacation checks. If you live in the township and you call the police department, you can ask for a vacation check. They will check your house for you every day while you're on vacation. They get out, they walk around your house, they make sure that nothing looks ajar. They make sure there's no issues there. And that's the thing we really pride ourselves on is doing those types of additional services, doing the same with businesses to make sure they're safe and working as well. So with that, that's really what we're talking about and how we handle those things. When you get down to some of the nitty-gritty questions, that's why it would be better if Chief Brink were here because he could answer a lot of those better than I can. But since you got the pinch hitter, that's where we go. So again, thank you for allowing me to be here this evening, and hopefully we can keep moving forward in the right direction.
Thank you, Todd. Our last presenter invited me to participate with a Zoom call she had last week. And she had invited quite a few people from Maslin and around the area to just be on that Zoom call and express yourself, to get to know each other, to listen to her about what's happening in, in the city of Maslin, and to listen to them, some of whom had moved away. Uh, I know there was a, a coach from, uh, I forget where Alex Wood is from, uh, but he's an assistant football coach. Uh, and there's quite a few other people that I just met for the first time and other people that I've known for a long time who was on that call. She's got another one scheduled, I believe, uh, coming up here very shortly too. But I say that to tell you that she's been proactive all along. And many of you know her, uh, and many of you don't, but those who don't will get a chance to first hear from her this evening as Mayor Kathy Cottizaro Perry comes to the microphone.
Good evening. First, I would like to thank Ron Ponder and the Stark County Collaborative on Race Relations for hosting the event tonight and Coming Together Stark County, and of course Rabbi Spitzer. I too organized a community conversation in Maslin a few weeks ago with community leaders and members of our community, both near and far. It was an outstanding two hours and 15 minutes. We were able to discuss pain, acceptance and inclusion, and a need for more understanding, education, and love. I also had a call with our police officers, our senior officers, to share with them our community conversation. We had an extensive conversation with them that was powerful and positive. One takeaway for me is we need to work on our relationships with others. We need to make more understanding of each other. Education has always been my personal go-to and to, to when there is understanding that is needed. This, I believe, is on both sides of the equation. The City of Maslin has had a program for four years to help citizens become police officers through our diversity committee. We paid for OPADA training, which is training to become a police officer. We had one success story in those four years. We have had several breakfasts and gave out awards, and we also had two Neighborhood Resource Fair. And we did that because people need jobs. People need to go to college. People need to know where their SARTA bus routes are. People need to know where their daycares are. We also had Ohio Means Jobs there, Quest, The Trades, our library, and much more. Our communities need to be connected with resources. They need support. They also need to feel safe in their city, and one way to provide safety is through relationships. We will have a major focus on community relations and getting to know our residents better. My father was a Canton police officer, and it seemed way back when everyone knew each other, and they had much deeper relationships. And this is not just for our police, but it is everyone's responsibility to create a positive relationship in your community. It's our community. We must work together as a community to make effective change. And I look forward to working with everyone to make those positive changes, to make our community stronger, more inclusive, and more accepting of everyone. Thank you for having me tonight. It's an honor and a privilege to be here with you all. It's an honor and a privilege to be here with you all.
Well, that concludes our presentation, so let's give all of our presenters a hand, Now it's your turn. Those of you here in the auditorium and also those of you who are watching at home or wherever your phones are, your laptops are, because we're streaming live as we did Tuesday night. Had a lot of good questions, so I expect some good questions tonight. Nicole, did you want to step to the microphone? Now if you're on this side of the room and you've got a question, go to this microphone. If you have a question and you're on this side of the room, go to that microphone. And Joe will take care of cleaning the mics between people as Frank Fleischer, oh Nicole, you've just, you've just been nominated. So let's start with the first question and we're going to alternate questions from the auditorium and then one from online. We're going to take a question from the auditorium and then we'll take a question from online. Nicole, it's on you.
Okay, so we are monitoring Facebook questions and a lot of these questions have either come in through Facebook or were emailed to the collaborative. And the first one is, I know we spoke about Canton and the Eight Can't Wait initiative on Tuesday, but Stark County law enforcement agencies outside of Canton City, will you be adopting campaign zeros, eight can't wait, use of force policies to reduce police violence? And if not, why?
Was that directed to anyone specifically?
No, it was just asking the Stark County Sheriff and then the separate municipalities that were here.
Okay, then I suggest we let George handle that.
I think this is on. Well, thank you for that question. We have not adopted the Eight Can't Wait, however, our policies follow the, the guidelines of the Eight Can't Wait. What we have done, as was mentioned with the city of North Canton, we have adopted the Ohio Collaborative, which was mentioned recently by Governor, the governor and the Attorney General as the guidelines for law enforcement agencies' best practices in Ohio. And so if you look at those, and I think the mayor, North Canton mayor did an excellent job of going over those, if you look at those, those cover the areas that are mentioned in, in the Eight Can't Wait. The language is just about the same, however, it's not called the Eight Can't Wait. And it's Stark County Sheriff's Office, we certainly, as I mentioned, are following the twenty-first century, century police philosophy.
Thank you, George. John, if you don't mind, go ahead.
I have a question about complaints. So back in two thousand and eighteen, I wanted to file a complaint against a police officer. And I feel like the, I guess the systematic way for you to do that needs to be fixed. I went to the courthouse, I told him I even wanted to file a complaint. They sent me down to a basement, I spoke to somebody at like a desk behind a glass. They sent me into like this little office behind that desk. I spoke with a man, I'm not sure of his name right now, but I spoke with him. By the time I got done with that conversation, I was so frustrated that I didn't even want to do what he told me. He told me I had to go upstairs and file the complaint with a different desk. But I felt like the process of me going to him first and telling him my complaint and him belittling my complaint made me not go upstairs and complain. So I feel like you guys need to talk about it and about the way people complain about police officers because twenty-four complaints in four years just doesn't sound like a very good number that's actually representative of the problems that we have in Stark County. I just don't believe it. And then I also want to, I'm sorry, this is a statement, but Mr. Ferraro, you were mentioning about the cycles that we need to fix. And you spoke a lot about the cycles in our communities that we need to fix, but you didn't speak about the, the cycles of the little children that are watching police officers belittle, hurt, run into their mothers and fathers' houses and then they cause fear. And now that fear and hate of the police officers with them growing up little and watching it is a cycle that we also need to break, sir. And I feel like you not saying that and not including that in your cycles is part of the problem.
Let me ask you, on your complaint, which jurisdiction were you in? Who were you complaining against? What department?
The Canton City Police Department.
Okay.
It was Officer Kinlaw.
Okay.
Ron, if I could speak to complaints because we hear, we hear this a lot and each agency certainly has their own policy as it relates to complaints and we don't hear a lot about how these policies work. First of all, I'm sorry you experienced that, I'm sorry you had to go through that. The way that a complaint policy should work is that you should be able to file a complaint either over the phone, via a letter, or just talking to somebody in person. And in our office, if, those three ways, if you file a complaint an officer, what we do is we initiate an investigation regardless of the facts of the complaint. We, we gather all the information and we initiate what we call an internal investigation. We do a complete and thorough internal investigations because we think that is, we owe that to you, the citizen, and we certainly owe that to the officer because there's always two sides to the story. Then we try to gather all the evidence, if there's any videotapes, any audiotapes, witnesses, those types of things, and then make a determination if something wasn't done properly. And there are cases where we have had complaints where the officer didn't do things according to our policy and then we take administrative action. You mentioned twenty-four complaints, that's not countywide, that's, I think that was from Tuesday, that was the city of Canton, just to be clear.
Correct, correct.
That's not countywide.
I'm talking about Canton City Police Department.
Okay, thank you.
I apologize. And my complaint was with Canton City Police Department and that's where I went to file the complaint. So I'm just saying, just imagine how many other me's there are who walked in to file a complaint, got sent to this little back room frustrated because you're already defending someone before you even know the full story of what I came here to do. So now I'm discouraged from even making the complaint.
Did you see any action relative to that complaint?
No.
Did they get back to you and tell you what they did?
No.
My suggestion is that you contact Andrea Perry, the safety director.
But I'm not here to ask a question about my specific situation. I'm asking what's going to be done to fix the process of complaining against police officers because it's obviously not being done if there's only twenty-four complaints in four years.
Okay, then once again, you know, if, if you want to find out what that complaint process is, contact Andrea.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now, your other question, you mentioned John Ferrero in your comments, do you want John to answer that?
I'm sorry. There was no question to that statement. I just made the statement because I heard him say it as we sat down and spoke and it touched me because I did appreciate what you said, but then you lost me at the end when you made the statements about the community and the issues that you have with the communities and, and watching the drug fallen parents and violence and things like that, but you didn't mention the other side.
I think my point was, when I made that last statement, was that we need changes and I've been saying we need changes in the police department because of the activities of the criminal activities and I, I stated that of across the country and that's what I meant by that, that we need changes in our police departments and we, we are going to change that. But I think we also need to think of those changes, like I said, in the cycles of, of children growing up, watching the violence and then, you know, committing, committing crimes when they get older. I think that that's what I meant. But I did preface it by saying we need to change police department activities.
Thank you for your question. On this side.
My name is Iris Fraser. I'm here with the Committee for Change and this is my partner Jackie Coffey. And I want to thank that young lady for her question because that actually kind of feeds into a suggestion that we have for the police department. We want to recommend community review boards. We've talked to Mayor Bernaby and Andrea Perry about this. They do have a committee that is in place, however, this committee is chosen by the mayor and it's chosen internally. A deep issue with this and what the sheriff was speaking on is that they do internal investigations and it's all handled internally. There needs to be a board of people put together that are stakeholders within the community that do not operate on the police department payroll. That is the only way to really get complaints really filtered by people that are non-biased. And I mean, almost any other industry in the world, like for me example, I'm a catering manager, so I deal with the food service industry. There are departments that are in place, that are external, that come in and review, you know, our food safety and things like that. So I, it's, it's a little laughable that if somebody has a complaint about the police, you go to the police to complain about them. There needs to be an election of some sort held where the people in the community vote for people that can review these complaints. And not just that, but we would work with the police department as well to review these complaints, but as far as like internally reviewing complaints, that just seems a bit like out of this world. It, it doesn't make sense. And the only way the police department will be able to build trust and legitimacy, as Sheriff Meyer was saying, is by doing that. There needs to be people within the community, the police department is there to serve the community. So the community should have some kind of input on what exactly the police department is doing. And I heard, you know, there are other things in place, like the core planning committee that the captains had spoke about, but this committee needs to be specifically focused on use of force complaints and police complaints in general. There needs to be people that do not get paid by the police department to do that. So my first question I guess is, what is the first step? How do we go about making this change? How do we go about working with police departments and sheriff departments to form a committee? Because honestly, in talking with different people in the communities, different groups, this is a great first step and if the police department was willing to kind of join hands with the community and do this, I think it would be a great way for police departments to show not only just in Canton, but Ohio and in the United States that, you know, police officers really are trying to make changes and police officers really do want to be held accountable. So how can we go about making this change?
Are you addressing it to anyone specific or?
Any of the men in uniform, honestly.
Well, thank you for your question and comments. They, they really do resonate because you were struggling to find a word there about the system that's in place and I think a good word to use might be archaic. Because this is the way we have always done it, so that's the way we do it. It doesn't make it right. So we do have to find a way to make that better. As a matter of fact, there already has been a number of suggestions and one of the ways we're doing that is through the Ohio Collaborative, which is kind of like a, an accreditation process where they come in and test your values, make sure you're following your policies, make sure you're operating the way that you say you're operating. The other way is recommended by the governor and the attorney general is a law enforcement oversight and accountability board. If you think about it, most professions have an accountability board. If you're a nurse, there's the nursing board. If you're a doctor, there's the physician's board. If you're a pharmacist, there's a pharmacy board. So this might be the right direction to go. I think it's a little bit in the early stages because we don't have any additional information. This just came out late last month from the governor's office, but they're looking at an accountability and oversight board that would be made up of people of the community that would oversee all these cases. When I say these cases, the high profile use of force cases, all the cases that are required to be reported will be reported to the state and then those cases can be reviewed by the board. That doesn't preclude that the local law enforcement agency can't take their own action and should. I'd hate to see local law enforcement lose the ability to correct, take corrective action against a bad police officer, somebody that's not doing the right thing, not following policies and not treating the public with dignity and respect. Because that does happen, although we don't see that a lot, that does happen and I'd hate to lose that ability. But I do think this is going in the right direction to have an independent accountability board.
Anybody else want to address that?
There is something. The, at the NAACP, we've been working with some other places and some other cities. Akron in particular has an office of the independent police auditor. Now, when it comes to oversight, which is something that at the national level the NAACP is advocating for, you know, oversight and accountability. And I think, you know, what Sheriff Meyer's talking about is correct, there's an archaic system. Now, there are things that are in place, it's not an either or, but it's a both and, I believe, where obviously, yes, there needs to be internal review, but there also has to be external accountability. And I think to have what we were talking about earlier about faith in the institutions. If people don't have faith that the police, you know, if you're saying, okay, I have a complaint about the police and they're handling it internally and you have no faith that that's going to be an impartial review, but it, there has to be, there has to be things working and there are examples of that all over the country. There are things that Sheriff Meyer was talking about, but there are things just around, you know, in Ohio, in Topeka, Kansas, I have, you know, paperwork from there and from Milwaukee where we're doing research on how we can get these things implemented because, you know, if it's a community board or if it's a couple of people, you know, in an official position, in official capacity. But I think that oversight and accountability has to be, you know, the number one option going forward.
Okay. Thank you, young ladies. Appreciate your questions.
Thank you, and I'm sorry, just one last thing here as we're speaking about accountability. So of the people on this stage, who can I hold accountable? Because when we walk away from this meeting, like who is the person that I can address and I can talk to, to continue these talks? I do not have faith, I'm sorry, that, just taking word that things are going to change. Because if recent events hadn't happened, we wouldn't be sitting here today. And this has been an ongoing issue for decades, upon decades, upon decades. So who can we hold personally responsible for ensuring that these talks will continue to happen and that change will happen?
These talks meaning?
These conversations, like, yeah, just like this.
Okay, well, I do know that Coming Together Stark County has committed to continuing these. And if John Spitzer, if you give him your name and contact information, the next time we start planning one of these, are you the, are you the guy, John? John likes to assign people to do tasks, so now I'm assigning John to do a task. Please give him your information and when we do one of these again, you'll be brought in ahead of time so that you could be on the planning part of what we do in the future, okay? And I thank you for your concern, okay? John's right there in back of you. Nicole? Oh, okay.
Hi, my name is David Matheny and I'm a resident of North Canton. First, I'd like to thank everybody for coming out tonight and sharing their insight, it's been very informative. I have two questions. The first one is for Mayor Wilder. The second question will be for the officers on the stage. So in light of the situations that occurred this past week in North Canton, and I understand from the Canton repository that the city and the police department did not know where the protest was going to start, where it was going to go and what intersection was going to be blocked. And I commend Chief Kemp and his officers on how they handled the situation, but it did escalate and they did handle it quickly, efficiently and effectively. But I want to know what the city learned from this, what they plan on changing, what they, what their action plans are and are there any training opportunities? My second question for the officers here is, road rage is an issue that doesn't need protest to exasperate it and it happens all the time. So protesters need to have a voice, they need to be safe, they need to be heard, but there are individuals in their cars and their trucks that get trapped into that situation that don't want to be there. And what are you going to do if they get trapped there to get them out of that situation before it escalates? Whether it happens on the freeway or it happens in the city where it might be easier to divert, what are your action plans to stop that so that we don't? what are your action plans to stop that so that we don't have a tragedy in the future?
Steve, why don't you go ahead first?
Sure. Good evening, David. The, that was our fourth demonstration or protest in the city. Our first three were peaceful, where we were involved in some of the planning and making contact with any of the organizers. And those were peaceful. And they were, we had sufficient personnel to help get those protests through. The fourth, when we started out with the same philosophy of, of working with these, with the organization, the organizers, trying to get a idea of what they had in mind, how we could cooperate in making sure that it was going to be peaceful, orderly, and still allow them to share their content and statement. At some point of the, of the process of the protest, there's a deviation in, in the, in the march or protest. And unfortunately, it wasn't what we were hoping that would be an orderly event. And I think there was another... Trying to find the right word for it. Another, a plan that was not what we were trying to hope for, to have something to be peaceful and orderly. We learned a lot from that and, excuse me.
Right. Because hindsight's 2020, so now you have this information, what are you going to do with it? What, what training opportunities are there? What are you going to do?
We have a different plan in place.
I hope.
We do. Frank?
Yeah. Come on up.
Please. I, I, your officers handled it very well. I just hope that...
There's some changes.
Mr. Ponder, I'm sorry I didn't have an opportunity to introduce myself first. To speak to this event, as the mayor said, previously, we had three events that we were in town that we were able to have safely conducted. This event, we went up, we made contact with the group. We were hoping to have a more positive turnout than the way that this went. We asked for what direction they planned to go. We had some concerns because a similar group had come to town and had disrupted intersections through the town. We were concerned about traffic, traffic pedestrian and community safety. At this time around, when we made contact with the group, we asked them, we preferred that they stay on the sidewalks for their safety. We also requested that they not shut down any intersections. The leader of their group acquiesced to us and expressed that they were going to go south on Main Street, they weren't going back up towards Apple Grove, which was a large concern for us. She would not say that she, they did not plan to shut down an intersection. We said we want to be involved in this with her, to be part of the, providing safety for the group. She felt she had an organized safety group of her own. She requested that we stay one block ahead and one to two blocks behind. Unfortunately, this set for a bad scenario when we got to the intersection in the square. We had a gentleman that made a poor decision to drive through a crowded roadway, which provoked the response that caused him to jump out of his vehicle and brandish a weapon at people, threatening their lives. As my officers were responding on foot to take care of the situation, they quickly recognized his hands were on the vehicle, they got him out of the vehicle, being concerned for everyone's safety there, that the situation could escalate because of the anger that was brought on by this gentleman. He was handed off to one of our officers who quickly took him out of the scene to a controlled area and we continued our investigation while he was under our control. Through our investigation, through our statements, we did make an arrest and the gentleman was arraigned in court today and is going through the court system. So would we have wished that this would have went better had we have known they planned to block the intersection? The very first protest that came to our town, we had a plan in place, we made contact with them, we asked how we could provide safety and support logistics for their planned event. During that timeframe, we had barricades set up, ready to provide them an opportunity that they could use an area in town where we're controlling the safety. But in this instance, a young lady felt that she had enough people there to control the safety. And I expressed to her several times, I had a concern. And unfortunately, it did not go as we planned. We've had discussions going forward and we do the plan to deal with this in a different manner. Going forward, we would politely request that anybody coming into our town wanting to do a protest, peaceful protest is allowed to be on the sidewalks and not impeding traffic. We would request that you would get, and I'm sorry I'm going on, but I'm using your platform to get this information out to the public. If you're going to come into town, we would ask that you request a permit from my office and we have made arrangements to plan to have the street in front of City Hall shut down. We're not going to shut down any intersections, but we would offer the platform of being right in front of City Hall and in the town center to get the message out in a peaceful manner. If you're not going to ask for a permit from us, then we request that you would stay on the sidewalk for your safety.
What's your name?
I'm Chief Frank Kemp. I became chief in January upon the retirement of John Minock.
Thanks for that explanation.
Did that answer your question, sir?
You answered my question. I think your officers did an excellent job de-escalating the situation, but with what you learned from it, when things happen that are not expected, do you have a way to deal with the traffic?
Yes.
Okay.
Are you satisfied?
I, that's fine, yes. I was hoping to get more action plans, but I understand that it seems to be evolving and they're not quite sure what's going to happen. But I just want to make sure that the protesters have a voice, that they can be heard, that they remain safe and not challenged by vehicles passing through their, their protest and that those people in the vehicles have an exit strategy if they don't want to be part of it.
Could you?
Each situation is fluid and it's based upon the plans that the organization that comes to town to do this has. You know, fortunately, we did not have anybody seriously injured out of this. We did offer assistance and sought, if anybody needed medical attention, a couple of different times. I know different people heard me ask that narrative, so at different times, it seemed like I was asking later in the event than when I first asked it.
If you develop, you change your policy or implement a new policy, could you let that be public so everybody can understand what that is?
Can you clarify the policy?
Yeah, he was talking about what you learned from this instance.
Right. The action plans that you have going forward?
The action plans going forward is the request to stay a block ahead and a block behind will not be honored. We will be involved in providing safety for the area.
Good. Keep, keep them safe.
We're not going to block their statement or contact, or content.
No, no.
But we have to maintain some sense of order and protection for property and lives, officers and the people on there. And that would be our intention. Time and manner and content will be protected, but...
Okay. We've got to move on to the next question.
I, I guess the, the second question to the officers on stage, when it comes to the freeways and traffic being stopped there, how do you provide safety and exit strategies for the vehicles? What's the plan?
Do you want one particular officer to answer that?
State Highway Patrol would be best.
Okay.
Bas, basically, what we would do, we contact various entities, ODOT and different entities of that manner. Anytime there's a large congestion of some sort on the roadway, we always provide an out for them. So as long as we have knowledge of where the congestion is or wherever the traffic hazard is, then that's where we would shut down roadways. Sometimes even, we don't like to do it, we would have people drive their opposite direction in order to get to a safe ramp so they can exit for safety. Again, these things happen and you don't have knowledge, so then you have to take action immediately. And that's when we get other entities, other law enforcement agencies involved to be able to shut down roadways, to provide maybe possibly one-way routes so people can exit faster. You made a comment about road rage and I'll tell you, um...
Scary.
Road rage is just, is bad driving habits. The Highway Patrol, we enforce distracted driving issues and a lot of this stuff is stemmed from cell phone usage. So we are starting to really look at those types of issues as well.
Thank you.
Thank you for your question. Nicole, you want to?
Nope. Keep going.
You don't want to handle any questions from the?
No, he can go next.
Okay. Yes, sir.
Hello. My name is Larry Wade. I'm a three-time combat vet. For eight and a half years, I served in my country. I got questions, basically, one about this committee. I don't see any representation of common folk, just common citizens with a voice, with an opinion. When I did work for the Timken Company, there was always an engineer that would come, change stuff on the machine that he's never ran. And the men who ran it for 25 years, they never asked their opinion on the changes. And I keep seeing these people who don't live in the communities that they serve, but you, you don't even ask us our opinion. And then you have these committees and meetings and gatherings and you're not, your finger's not on the pulse. So I do have two questions.
First, which committee are you talking about? The one that's convening this? Or well, you have equal opportunity to be a part of this committee. And I would suggest...
Not, not, not from here.
I would suggest that you contact Coming Together Stark County.
Okay.
And join that arg, that organization.
Yes, sir.
I don't think it costs anything.
Okay.
But you'll be privy to everything that goes on there and you'll be a part of it.
It's 20 bucks.
Oh. Frank tells me they're $20 to join.
Okay, that's cool.
But do that. They're looking at people like yourself.
Um, so the next question is, is there changes being made to the court system? And specifically, the other question is for, uh, the court system question is to the mayors and the other question is to the, the officers and Highway Patrol. As an African-American male, I've never been in trouble, never smoked, never drank. But there are certain streets that I don't turn down because being black, turning down those streets, there's hot spots. And a black man though, if I go into this neighborhood on this street, just because the color of my skin, right here in Stark County, I'm going to get pulled over. I went downtown the day I got out of the military to see the Palace Theater. They impounded my truck, which had factory tint, because the female police officer in Canton City said that she couldn't see in the back window. I said, well, that's factory tint. They impounded my car for four days and made me walk home. And I went downtown and complained, nothing was done. I called the NAACP, they wouldn't even hear me. And when I went to court for the thing, I sat for four and a half hours dealing with heroin addicts and marijuana and all that. And by the time the judge got to me, he was tired, he was offended and he was irritated. And they gave me, you know, it was just, it was money. They just wanted money from me from, from driving downtown. And so there has to be changes made to the court system for the officers. When you pull someone over, I don't know what the policy is, where you always have to radio it in or you don't. You don't always have to turn on the camera or you don't. But when she pulled me over, she didn't ask for my license, she didn't ask for my registration. She called another officer, they high-fived each other, I watched my truck get loaded on a flatbed. And I went to the court and the judge wouldn't even hear what I had to say because he was tired by the time he got to me. And they just took money from me and I had only been home for four days. And so something has to be done where when you pull someone over, they got to know why they're being pulled over. You got to tell them, you know, what the, something, what the charge is or whatever. And then when they report it or complain, something has to be done for real. That right now, if I get off on this exit to see my mother and turn past the State Highway Patrol, if it's a white Highway Patrol officer that sees me going to my mother's house, I was pulled over 14 times in 30 days.
For the same thing?
For the, for, for no reason, because I was black.
Did they tell you why they pulled you over?
No, they didn't tell me why I was...
I, I think...
In 30 days.
Hold on. I thought when you're pulled over, the officers have to say to the person they pulled over what they're being pulled over.
First of all, thank you for your comments and most importantly, thank you for your service to our country. We do appreciate that. I'm sorry you had to go through a situation like that and had to experience that. I, I can't speak to that situation because...
Right, right.
You know, it's a different agency. I don't know what happened.
Right.
Obviously, obviously it has impacted you and understandably, we need to listen to that, we need to hear that. It is, uh, under the best practices for law enforcement and most law enforcement agencies' policies, it is required that the law enforcement officer identify themselves without being asked, identify themselves and tell you the reason that you've been stopped or detained, okay? And I know I spent 25 years with the Highway Patrol and that's the way we always did it.
Right.
And that's the way our deputies do it. I cannot speak to how they're doing it or not doing it, or I don't even know what the time period was.
So the question is, if I reported it and nothing was done, who do I talk to? Right now, real quickly, if I go Fulton and the Hills and Dales and I'm black, right there on that corner where the church is at St. Michael's, they will pull me over. If I go to Grinders in Lewisville and I'm black, just to go get a sandwich, they will pull me over. There's hot spots all over this city and we know because we get harassed. And the only question they ask me, because I was driving a 540i BMW, which was mine, is, is this your car? And I'm frustrated because you want me to respect you, you want me to respect America.
I, I've got something.
Wait a minute. Willis, you want to say something?
I do. Now, I'm in a similar boat to you. I was in the Navy, I got out in 2012 and I came back here. I was born here, but I went, I went over and I came back recently. And I had, you know, similar interactions with police upon coming back, because when you're young and you're big and you're black, these things happen. I, I want to let you know that, you know, I'm, I'm sorry that, you know, the previous iterations of the NAACP didn't get back to you. We're here now. If something were to happen, I want you to know that you can call us and we've got your back. There's, um, there's policy reform that we're advocating for and we're obviously working with these people here, but this is important to me and it's important to our organization that we have people's back in this community. And regardless of what has happened before in the past, I want to make sure that that is not the way it is going forward.
And I'll reiterate what Willis said. Can you make sure he has your phone number?
Absolutely. If you want to say afterwards, I want to talk to you, yeah.
Yeah. Oh, okay.
I know, I know.
And also, if you're interested in joining Stark County Coming Together, do so, okay? Make sure that happens.
Mr. Ponder?
Oh. Oh. Yes. Does that mean five minutes? Oh, wow. Okay. Um, yes, ma'am.
This should be quick. Uh, this question is for Major Jones and Captain Hill. First of all, thank you very much for coming here, appreciated the information you shared. Thank you for your time. Uh, you spoke about the value engagement approach. I would like to hear more specifically about how that is integrated into your trainings and even going beyond the trainings that are, are just, you know, the initial... and even going beyond the trainings that are just, you know, the initial schooling. Can you please expound on that?
So basically, everyone was trained in it, and they have knowledge of this value engagement approach, and it's basically, everybody has value. And when we first initially rolled out the training, we just listened to the employees. It wasn't just uniform, it was actually uniform and civilian, and we listened to them. So we got to hear them. And I talked about that voice, giving everyone the voice. So now, once we establish a relationship with the voice, then we understand where they're coming from as management, and then vice versa. So with all of that in mind, just listening to the folks, understanding where they're coming from, understanding what the Highway Patrol's values, and understanding what the Highway Patrol is trying to accomplish, that's basically what we do. And every employee, they seem to really embrace what we're saying because we were listening to them. It, it all comes down to relationships and listening.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your question. Can we squeeze one more question in, John? If it's a quick question?
I actually, I had two questions, but I will just do my second one. To speak to what Prosecutor Ferraro was talking about as far as, you know, the community side and trying to improve on the community side with children who, you know, are seeing abuse and drugs and alcohol and things like that. My question is, like, with the national discussion that we're having with the defunding the police and funding social programs, what are we doing in Stark County to better fund those social programs so that we do have, on the community side, some improvement as far as that, and trying to reduce crime at an early standpoint? You know, with poverty and things like that, and, and low resources, and we see more crime because of that, what are we doing to actually see better social, better funding for social programs to try to improve those things?
Are you asking John that?
Him or anyone else that can speak to that?
I can speak. That's a very good question. It's, it's a never-ending battle as far as the services that we need to be provided to people to help, to help them get out of these cycles. And that's why I made that statement, maybe to, maybe to strike a nerve with everybody. You know, we need to change. And that, that was my speech, was not only the police need to change, we need to change, government, all of us here today need to change. And those are things that, it's going to be a constant battle. We need funds to help get the people the services they need, help these kids. I know our courts try to do, do the best they can. When a kid gets in trouble, juvenile court tries to, that's their main goal, is try to rehabilitate that child, try to get them on the right track again. And many times, it works, many times it doesn't. And a lot of kids keep coming back and back, and they try to get services there. But it's, it's a funding issue on a lot of that, where, where the kids are stuck in a position where they, they just see the crime keep going, and we just need, we need to keep, all of us as a community, need to keep working at that, and try to get funds from the state and the feds to get them the services they need. And I'd make one more suggestion, especially when it comes to funding, go to the next meeting of the county commissioners and make that point. Because they do partially fund the Department of Job and Family Services, and tell them what you'd like to see them fund, pay for. Okay? And take more people with you if you need to.
Ron, if I could add, tag on to what Prosecutor Ferraro said, he is absolutely correct. You know, we got to constantly keep the eye on the ball and where this funding's going, and we need to keep it local here so that we can continue the services, or have services that we don't already have. We've been doing some of that, and I want to, I want to mention that if it's okay in this forum. You know, in the last two years, we have probably doubled, if not tripled, the amount of counselors that we have in schools in Stark County, in the 17 school districts here in Stark County. That was accomplished through the School Safety Task Force, working with Stark Mar, working with the Education Service Center and Joe Chatic, to make sure that we had those resources available, because we, through survey, knew that we had children in our schools that were in need of those services. And so, we're not exactly where we want to be, but we're getting there. We're continuing to add those services. Another thing that we've done, we piloted a program here, and some of you, if you live in Stark County, which I live in Stark County, and many people here do live in Stark County, you'll probably be getting something in your mail. It's a little card that tells about Coleman Services with Stark Mar on mobile mental health services and addiction recovery services. We piloted that program in law enforcement with, with Coleman Services and with Stark Mar. We encouraged them to fund that program. What that allows us to do, when we in law enforcement engage with someone in our community that is addiction, is addicted or has an addiction recovery issue, or has a mental health or crisis, we're able to bring a mobile crisis team out there, the professionals, the people that are trained to do this, to come out and meet with the individual, the family, whatever the needs may be, to address that issue. There's a capacity issue with that right now. The capacity issue is, it's such a good service, it's being used quite frequently, and so we're working with Stark Mar, Coleman Services, to increase that capacity.
Thank you, George. And we're really going to have to shut it down, but a couple of things I need to say. First of all, you don't need forums like this to always communicate with folks who are in safety, safety forces. You know who they are now, and you knew who they were from Tuesday night for the Canton City. If you've got an issue with the police or a police department, go straight to them and talk to them, and hopefully that'll be rectified on that level. Also, if you want to do, like I told that gentleman over there, join Coming Together Stark County, if you want to be a part of these, and I'm sure they would really welcome your support and your involvement. The third thing is, Sunday morning in the Canton repository, I wrote a column about how I feel about all this that's going on. I suggest you read that. Fourth thing is, thank you for coming, and thank you who are watching our stream, because these forums are for you. And I want to thank the officers and mayors up here, because they want to make some changes that you might suggest. So if you have some ideas, go straight to them and present those ideas to them. With that being said, I want to thank you once again for participating, and please be safe. Wear your masks, okay? Thank you all.